The regular meeting, the Garfield Planning Session, ask you to have the Garfield Township Planning Commission to order. The first item is pleasance of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we'll have a roll call. John or Steve?
Yes, Agustinelli?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
De Good is absent and excused. Fudge?
Here.
Racine is absent and excused. Robertson?
Here.
McManus?
Here. Okay. First item on the agenda tonight is public comment. This is the first of two public comments we'll have this evening. So if any member of the public would like to get up and tell us what they want to say, now is the time, first time you can do it tonight. So, all right, as normal, the public's not rushing to the microphones, so we'll move on to item number two, which is a review and approval of the agenda, and any conflicts of interest would be, now would be the time you'd want to state those.
I'll make a motion and we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is minutes from our September 13 regular meeting. You've got those in your packet. Any comments, corrections, or anything you'd like to talk about on the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Support. Motion made and supported to approve the minutes from the September 13 meeting. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, correspondence. John, I don't see any correspondence.
There is no correspondence.
Okay. Reports. Molly, anything for the town board this evening?
Nope, we did not have a meeting last night.
No meeting, okay. ZBA, Bobby, ZBA?
Yeah, we had a meeting last week. We had two items on the agenda. One was the second half of a follow-up on Mr. Joe's request to add onto his garage, which was too big as far as the footprint, and it was rejected. So he did that. The second one was a public hearing, had a second story to a home on Silver Lake. I think it was like 820 North Silver Lake on the west side. And they called the last minute and canceled till November because they were out of town and couldn't get back.
Okay. Awesome. Don't usually have much ZBA activity, so good to hear some ZBA.
Yeah, normally we don't do a thing.
Yeah. Okay, Parks and Rec, I don't see Chris here this evening, so nothing there. And we have not had a joint planning commission meeting yet since the last one, so we're nothing there. So staff, any items you'd like to discuss?
Just, we have our announcement that the master plan update information is available on the township's website, and we'll be populating that with additional information as changes are made. Did want to make a couple of comments and follow-up to conversation at the previous meeting of the planning commission. There was mention about the Beta project, and I just want to read to you the portion of the report and decision order that granted the approval back in, let's see, this would have been in 2022, in relationship to the housing and the construction of the Beta facility itself. And it says to ensure compliance with the PUD eligibility requirements, after the Traverse City Housing Commission receives a Lytec reservation letter from MISHTA or equivalent grant award for workforce housing, Beta may begin construction of the bus garage, bus storage garage, bus maintenance garage, administration building, transfer station, and open space improvements in the transit phase. So we did receive that, MISHTA did provide funding to the Housing Commission as well as the state of Michigan provided a grant for housing on that particular site. The second part states that the Housing Commission must commence housing construction before Beta may make a request for a certificate of occupancy. Beta must complete the transfer station and open space improvements in the transit phase at the same time or before completion of the bus garage, bus maintenance garage, and administration building. That last part there, we added in to ensure that they weren't going to build just the bus garage and administration portion. We wanted to make sure that that transfer station was also included in that because that was an important piece to the function of that PUD. So that's currently how it's stated, and we'll be, you know, going with that as they move forward in their project.
Okay. Thank you for the follow-up. Any questions about that?
Yeah. What's your interpretation of begin construction for the housing?
That's a good question. Typically, what we would consider is permits being pulled. But I don't know, I guess that's something we'd have to take a look at. You know, typically we'd say, okay, land use permit, and then building permits are pulled, but that doesn't mean that necessarily we'll commence starting on that. I would say that has to have, you know, some, you know, construction, physical construction on the site has to commence.
Of a building? Because there's infrastructure.
Yes.
I mean, they've started that.
Yeah, vertical, and I would say it has to be related to the actual housing in terms of what they're, what it's kind of stating here. Must commence housing construction.
Housing construction to me means walls and...
Foundation.
Foundations, that type of thing.
Okay, good. My understanding...
So what do we have in our special use permit, if we don't do something in two years? Is that kind of the same thing that we require?
They have to commence construction within two years.
But excavating works for that, right? Or major balancing of the site?
Yeah, usually the ordinance, I think, calls about what's, I think it mentions about substantial or something like that.
Yeah, I think some have done like utilities, like installing infrastructure in the ground as part of that as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
And did another item I just want to mention, too. I did reach out to the road commission regarding Hope Road and Silver Pines Road regarding the no trucks signage on there. Have yet to hear back from them on that, but I just wanted to let you know that we did make that outreach to the road commission regarding that issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the staff? Okay, thanks, John. All right. Next item is six under unfinished business is Planning Department Report 2023-112, the master plan update and future land use and master street plan.
Okay, so I think how we, Steve and I were kind of talking about wondering how to review some of this material with you, and this is really our only agenda item this evening, so it's an opportunity to kind of just have a informal conversation. I think there's roughly about three parts that we want to talk about. We're going to talk, probably follow the map of, we have in your packet three maps related to the future land use. There's the existing future land use map, which was part of the current master plan when it was adopted back in 2018. Then there's a, what we're proposing as at least a starting point for conversation, the 2023 future land use map will probably end up being 2024. But that's a very rough draft. We wanted to put something in front of you to kind of see your reaction. But I think what we're going to be following is going through changes between the two maps, and we'll be following that first, going through this future land use map, showing you some of the changes on the map as well as the designations that we've altered. Once we get through that, we're going to go through the master street plan, which talks about the different parts of why we don't operate the road system within Garfield Township. We are trying to identify things we'd like to see happen because of its impact on the overall character of the township and what we're trying to achieve. And then the last part was we're going to go into kind of specifically some potential future road connections. So it's going to be very specific, and we'll follow along in a map on that. But at this point, what I'd like to do is, if you have this changes map, which Steve has up on the projector, up on the screen there, on the right side of that is, are some of the key changes, and this kind of summarizes what we're going to go through.
And as John alluded to, these are all in, including the text, is all in draft form. We'll review this again in October. We want to get it out there as like a first full attempt of like this chapter based on conversations we've had at previous study sessions, incorporating the public feedback from the community survey, and when we've looked at districts, nodes, and corridors. When we actually wrote it as well, trying to compile all that, we kind of morphed the districts, nodes, and corridors into some of these categories and into the connections. I think it flows a little bit more intuitively, but again, these are all in draft form, so we're looking for feedback as we go through this.
Yeah, so as Steve mentioned, we kind of got rid of the districts and nodes. We thought that was going to layer on top of the future land use map, and as we looked at it, it got very kind of confusing. So what we've come up with is two new categories, one called mixed-use center, and the other one is called mixed-use neighborhood. So these are actually future land use designations. And the difference between the two is centers are going to be larger ones, and these are going to be, have, you know, probably more of commercial elements in them. They are going to have potentially some housing in them, maybe some office, other types of uses that flow together fairly well. And the ones that we have listed in here, and some of these are new names, some of these are familiar names. The first one we have in is called Ashland Park, which you're familiar with, the PUD. That is, you know, that portion of the mass, excuse me, of the PUD plan there talks about having that kind of node up near the corner of Burnley and Garfield. It has some office in there right now, but it's planned to be built out. Could include some additional commercial in there as well. Another one is Barlow-Garfield, which you're familiar with. That one is, we're probably going to divide that up into two areas. It's really kind of focused on the cherry, and this color that we're looking at is kind of this darker purple color is on the map. And we're going to probably divide that one up into two areas. And one of them is kind of the cherry land center, and then the other one is kind of the area between Barlow and Park Street along Woodmere as well. And again, these are just, what it's intended to do is designate these areas as mixed use to include primarily commercial. In the case of the area over by Barlow and Park is going to be a mix of, still is going to be industrial, but allow some maybe non-industrial uses, for instance, as office or non-retail commercial that would fit in there, something that might fit in that otherwise currently is not permitted. Certainly, each one of these is going to have a different description specific to these areas. So Ashland Park will have its own. Barlow-Garfield will have its own. Another one is Copper Ridge, which we're familiar with, that PUD. And a lot of that's already built out, but we wanted to have that designation to allow that mix of office, you know, the surgery center, there's some retail in there as well, and so forth, to have that, you know, restaurants and so forth are in there. Garfield Center is a designation. We're actually kind of merging a planned shopping center and a PUD together as a one designation, and in really kind of identifying that as, here's a, you know, say at the center of the township, pretty much geographical center, it's probably one of our most active commercial areas, includes, does include in addition to traditional retail, but it has restaurants, it has some amount of residential in there as well. And we just want to kind of identify that one as kind of this mixed-use center. Logan's Landing is another one. There we have some commercial restaurants. We have a lot of office space down in there. And again, these descriptions, which you will see in the packet, are very specific, basically some guiding principles for development of these particular areas. The one that we've kind of called down by Rennie School and 31, basically it's Rennie Plains is the name we've put for it, but that's the area which is, you know, is the Olson Foundation property. Right now, the designation is commercial, and we're saying, well, that doesn't really reflect what that area is. And we wanted to say, okay, it could be mixed use. You could have some commercial in there. You could potentially have some light industrial in there. You could maybe have some high-density, you know, multifamily residential could mix in there as well. So we wanted to kind of provide some flexibility, but also some guidance into these particular areas. So the centers are large, more active places. Those, previously, we would have called those the districts, but we called, we thought mixed-use center really kind of says what these are in terms of a future land use. And then to complement that, we switched out nodes, and we went to the term called mixed-use neighborhood. So center being large, like a town center or village center, neighborhood being smaller, like a node, and we have some smaller ones scattered throughout the township. We have Brookside Commons, which is a PUD, but we kind of use that name to cover the larger area over there at North Long Lake Road in Zimmerman. So we have the Brookside Commons, the apartments. We have some of the office there, the Meadow Valley, which has the senior living. There is a component plan for commercial there as part of the Brookside Commons PUD, but it hasn't been constructed yet, but that could occur there. And that would be, commercial there is really intended to kind of serve the immediate residents in that area and provide some convenience and services that they might need on a daily basis. Cedar Run Campus is an area up by, up near Munson Medical Center, over there by the Olson PUD, and it does include the Olson PUD, which is the grocery store there and the other associated commercial uses. A lot of medical clinics, offices in there. What we wanted to do is to consider maybe including some other complementary uses, potentially like high-density residential that might be within walking distance to some of those job locations there, whether it's Munson's campus itself, or the pavilions, or any of those clinics in that area. Green Hill is that area, Silver Lake Road and Zimmerman, and recognizing that as a mixed-use neighborhood, much smaller area, kind of really looking at the three corners there, the, and the northeast, the northwest, and then the southeast. Again, that would probably be more typical of what's already there, just to kind of recognize that as kind of a mixed-use neighborhood. McCray Hill Base, so we included this area because there is some amount of office space mixed in there, and we've, one of the things we've done is we've removed the professional office category. We didn't think it was needed to have its own prominent category. So a lot of these were kind of incorporated because they would incorporate professional office as a use. This area does, is primarily an office area, and so we thought we'd recognize that as kind of a mixed-use neighborhood. It's a transitional area between the heavier active general commercial, highway commercial to the north, and kind of transitioning up McCray Hill, but at that base, we find that there's some of those office spaces. Rennie Hill Veterans Drive, that's the corridor we're on, and there's quite the mix on this corridor and Veterans Drive here. We have certainly single-family residential, multifamily residential. We have office spaces. We have some, you know, we have some banks. We got credit unions. We got assembly halls. We got fire stations. So we got some public uses, Township Hall, kind of recognizing that there's a kind of a mix along this area. And then the last one is kind of one that is kind of unique. It's, we're calling it the West Bay M72 area, and it's actually just a small number of parcels that are really complementary, less to the township and more to the area within the city. If you're, that one office building that's there on the south side of M72, just west of the intersection there, part of that parking lot is actually, goes into Garfield Township. So we were trying to figure out how to best address that area, and we kind of incorporated that into one of these designations because we didn't really have an office designation, no longer in existence. But it's really complementary to the Tom's Grocery Market and some of the other uses there that are not necessarily within the township, but certainly function as part of serving that particular area. So I think those are most of the mixed-use centers and mixed-use neighborhoods. And again, there's the text in there, language that will actually provide guidance. And maybe I could, just for instance, looking at the Brookside Commons one, it talks about three different guiding principles, that there's housing in that area, that's served by water and sewer, that there's neighborhood services planned in the Brookside Commons PUD, and that there's connectivity in that area, particularly the connection, the extension of Zimmerman up to Harris Road. So just providing some guidance on what that area might look like when it comes to making zoning decisions and other land use decisions.
All right. I just had one question. On the map, a lot of these little blue dots are like water towers and stuff, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so we, what we've decided on that, one of the things we went into was, there was an institutional designation, and we wanted to recognize some of the public or semi-public. So that's why we picked up a lot of those designations.
I just noticed, I think the one up there by the number 10, I think, probably a water tower and so on. McCray, on McCray Hill, you don't have that one identified.
Oh, that's true.
Oh, good catch. Yeah, we had like the water, is it the tank up there?
Yeah.
So if those, if the blue designations are water towers or public infrastructure, you'd be note the one on McCray Hill.
Yeah, like you can see the corridors down on, down off of Keystone there that are, you know, DTE and consumers have all those runs in there, and those are their properties owning outright. And we thought, those are public semi-public. Makes a lot of sense.
I know, like number 12 on the, in the, what do you call that, the Rennie Flats or, you know, that little corner is, Rennie Plains, I should say, that little corner is a potential future site of one.
Right.
It's township bones, so. Any other comments or questions for John on his maps?
So, so we did, yeah, we, basically, we eliminated the office, professional office designation. There wasn't a lot, and we just, of those, and we just kind of incorporated into those either the mixed-use center or mixed-use neighborhood. Institutional really was focused on schools primarily, and, you know, maybe some other ones. But we thought, well, there's a lot of other public types of uses out there that we wanted to recognize, and that's why I think we just kind of switched over to public semi-public, particularly that really kind of changes the map and shows a lot of those properties in place.
So you meant to take the churches off? You didn't want the churches on there anymore, and you just had the school?
Right, because those, we thought that the public semi-public would reflect those of, have public interest in investments that were probably, are unlikely to change, where churches can change. And if there was any, if there was a conversion or something, let's say a church moved out, and what would that underlying use, what would we like to see there? Where we felt that the, that the public or semi-public were probably more long-term in those particular locations.
Although TCAPs could sell tomorrow.
Try them.
Yeah, they did that.
Probably, and then we did some big, we can point out some of the big map changes overall. Probably one of the biggest ones, if we look up at the northwest part of Garfield, and this, we're just throwing this out here for you guys to see what you think. So if you look at our current map, why don't you show our current map quickly?
Yeah, currently.
Yeah, just to show you what it looks like right now, a lot of that is designated as agricultural rural residential in that green area. But we were looking at, well, within the Water Main Extension going down Cedar Run with the water tower there, kind of at that number 10 location, and not as much active agriculture in that area. We thought maybe at this point, maybe just designating that all as low-density residential, which would be anything from one to three acres. And this would be just looking at it as future.
One to three.
Or one to three units per acre.
One to three units per acre, sorry. So, that's a, we thought we'd just kind of throw it out there and see what you guys think. Kind of associated with that is the area kind of down, where, at that point where Barnes Road ends, we also changed that. That, I think, was...
That might have also been...
Low-density res, oh, actually, that was, yeah, agricultural rural land and some low-density residential. We thought we would just make that medium density. It kind of reflects back over what's on the west side of Zimmerman, and we just kind of thought that would make an opportunity. There's water sewer there, that west side of Zimmerman, where we did see the one plat that didn't go forward, but that was R2 zoning in there. We thought it makes its proximity to the city and some of the services there, could go for more modest homes in terms of lot sizes, and really making it much more accessible to that area.
That's also where originally the Oakleaf was looking at that site. They came in for that conceptual review before they switched over to the other site, but being right across from Harris Hills, which we had reviewed as well, that sort of, we sort of identified is that this has got potential for something a little more higher than just low-density, but moderate seemed to be appropriate for that.
And we did apply the moderate density to, we went through the, utilizing the GIS, looking at parcel sizes and so forth throughout the township. We did identify some areas that already had some, what we would consider some of our smaller lots. For instance, we always use kind of the example of Boone Street, where it's shown as low-density residential, but really, the lot sizes in there are more conducive to a moderate-density residential. So we went, instead of that yellow low-density residential, we went to moderate-density, which is showing that as a designation, and that's three to six units per acre. We even have some duplexes on some of those. So we did make a few changes in some of those areas where we thought that would make a...
Veterans near South Airport also has some existing duplexes in this sub down here, and some existing like smaller lot, single-family, that probably predate the current zoning ordinance. But they just happened to be, were designated as low-density residential. I think they happen to be zoned right now as R1, but otherwise would fit that moderate density based on what the actual kind of layout is right now.
So are all the moderate-density ones that you switched over, do they serve by sewer?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Because these are all closer to town ones, or they're in the area that could be served by sewer, like the one on North Long Lake Road. It comes up to that point, I think. Because Harris was like right at the end of...
Right. No, that is what I was talking, is that Boone Street, all that stuff is sewer.
I believe all of that's on sewer.
And over here by the veterans, where you were talking about them duplexes, some of this is sewer and some's not over here, but it could be, if they ever rebuilt it, it would be served by sewer then, right?
Right. Right. I mean, we're looking at, that, we felt that that was an area just based on some of the existing types of residential in there would be conducive. One area that we kind of, we kind of looked at and is, does not have sewer yet, doesn't have any utilities, is what we call the ided property or their property behind Sam's Club there. And that one is, right now, it's, it's a mix. There's a, mostly of it is low-density residential, except right behind Sam's Club is agricultural rural land. So what we thought with the Sam's Club PUD, that's general commercial, and then right to the north of it, there's an area with some smaller parcels that was already identified as high-density residential, and there has been at least one rezoning there. We thought it would, we have the Gothier property, which is basically where the number nine is at, that's, was rezoned to R3 or high-density residential. We thought it might be helpful to transition from that more intensity going to the west with the, that's going down, stepping down to the low-density residential. So we thought in that middle part, that number five area, is maybe looking at some of those parcels as moderate-density residential. So it kind of steps it down as a transition. This is an area that does not have... This is an area that does not have water and sewer. The, the Sam's Club does, but beyond, anything beyond that to the west does not.
But it would if they developed it, it would.
Yes, absolutely. They would have to extend it, and that's what we anticipate. This area wouldn't be developed without water sewer. So that, I just wanted to point out, that's what we anticipated would be based on the water and sewer systems. Most of it would be coming probably off South Airport, although towards 31. But there is an area also to the west that has a potential to come through as well, so. Trying to think of some of the other changes we may have made. I think that's. We did change up kind of the Ashland Park and Traditions. It was shown as, in the current plan, is shown as low-density residential. But that's really not what's kind of planned or being built there too. Ashland Park has a lot of plans for duplexes. I don't know if that will be built out that way, but it certainly is more of a density that we thought the moderate-density would fit that area. Again, it's an area served by water and sewer. And anticipate that it would be for the full build-out of that.
In Traditions, of course, has the very small lot, kind of denser, single-family development. The other thing is the recreation. Currently, that designation is, is it just called recreational? We wanted to recognize recreation and conservation as much as possible to put both our parks, the county's parks, other entities' parks, but then areas that are just preserved. The township owns a couple parcels that are just wetlands. They're not really active parks, but they're, just sort of exist as preserved wetlands. There's sort of other parts of parcels. One thing we wanted to do a little bit differently than the current one, it almost uses agriculture, agricultural rural land, or sometimes recreational, following the streams and creeks and the river, which, attempting to draw that can get a little busy on the map. And the ordinance also has the setback requirements from streams and lakes and the rivers and wetlands. So it seems almost like having its own map that describes basically this with the streams, lakes and rivers. And discussing that just as a policy unto itself is to continue to protect water quality separate from the concept of a future land use map.
Why don't you go back to the current, and we'll kind of show you what Steve is talking about.
Yeah. Go up a little bit to this one?
Yeah, this one right here. Go to like, I don't know, where like the Beta Project is or something, for example.
Beta is one, yeah, where they actually show like the stream.
Right, so that, so it's basically showing high-density residential, but then there's the green going through there. And it's really to, to be like a buffer around what's the headwaters of Mitchell Creek. And instead of doing that, we know what the intent was there, but we, the zoning ordinance already has a stream buffer regulation and a requirement. So, and we don't, we thought it'd just be a little bit easier to show all those streams on a separate map within the plan. And we could even put the buffers in there just as to show some guidance on that. But this, we know as we go into, looking at the developments there, that there was wetland delineations that were determined, and then setbacks based on those delineations and so forth. So it was, we thought it'd just be cleaner to kind of maybe eliminate some of those and really address those as a separate map that helps to provide guidance when people are doing the zoning ordinance requirements. It's not to say we're eliminating those areas and that we're gonna, you know, if that's all now orange, or at least a portion of that is orange, it doesn't mean like we're, we're not going to protect those, those wetlands or those streams. It's just that we're not identifying them as a future land, their own future land use.
I like the idea that you did there, it makes it cleaner.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little confusing. It almost kind of makes you think that we're gonna have these strips of agricultural land permeating through there. So we'll address it in just a different manner.
And that's why I think when you brought up the fact that behind Sam's Club, there was some ag land, I think that ag that was there because of that reason, that was pretty wide right in that area.
Yeah. Yeah, and they probably just did that whole parcel there, where we know that whatever's built back there is gonna have to work around that regardless. So we just thought that helped to kind of maybe look at it as like transition. But yeah, the requirements for buffering wetlands and so forth are all still intact. You got anything else on the future land use?
I think that is most of it. And again, we, very draft, so we're just throwing ideas out there. We'll review it again, and then kind of alluding to next month, the other like big piece of the master plan will be the implementation. So looking at anything we've done so far, including this, how does that lead to what an implementation strategy is? And if it, through that process, looks like, oh, we need to adjust so that makes more sense when we're actually trying to apply the policy in making decisions, reviewing developments, looking at rezonings, we can always go adjust to what we need to. Like, for example, the recreation or conservation, we kind of use the base as our existing parks, whether the townships are somebody else's or some of these properties that are used as conservation. But it could be part of the policy that regardless of the future land use designation, if a parcel gets created to isolate a conservation easement or a wetland or something to be preserved, it can be the intention that that also lead to designating it as recreation or conservation or something like that. So there's some words here that kind of need to be part of the next chapter to tie all of it together. But this is one big piece of it, and it's a draft that's out there and just wanted to get the ideas out there.
I have a comment on the, so changing all this up in that northwest corner to yellow, I don't, I do not have a big problem with that, but that's not gonna be developed as likely is. Everything down here that's west of the highway of 31 is, should be yellow, in my opinion, instead. And there's more demand for the property to be developed down in the.
Oh, down.
Down in this, everything west of US 31 that's green now would be, in my opinion, that's, that's more apt or more desirable to be developed than, than up there in that northwest corner. Not to say that that northwest corner, I don't, I'm okay with what you did up there too, but I think we need to get some more of this down here. There's water and sewer down here. And I'll, you know, like right now, there's a parcel for sale over here right next to.
Right, just to.
It'd be right there south of, on East Silver Lake Road, it's the Dunn Farm.
Right.
And it's just south of that little subdivision, that little 40-acre subdivision that's in there.
Yeah.
And that's, so if that gets sold, it's one acre, it would be one acre parcels, and that's, in my opinion, a waste. They're wasting land. If we need the, we need lots closer to town. And that's my opinion anyway, that that, that should be, that area in there should be taken down to residential or the yellow.
One thing we can do is, we could talk with the engineer, to the township engineer, and see capacity in that area and see what is, you know, viable. I mean, that's kind of what we did with the area up in the northwest part, is say, okay, now that we have this very large water main going down Cedar Run, capacity is there to extend out into these areas. And we can, we can talk with her about this particular area as well.
And then the development that's gonna take place at the Rennie Plains or the.
Yeah.
The Olson Foundation, the surrounding properties around there with that much, that's why I feel that they, they're gonna be, there's more demand gonna be on turning them into residential. What's your opinion there, Joe?
Well, I, I've had the same thought for a long time. I mean, future land is how far in the future? I mean, agriculture is not a, not a real future. Very little of what you're looking at there is being farmed, other than the Olsons where they have the buffalo. And you?
Well, and anything that, anybody can still farm anything. And there's nothing that we can do to this map that's gonna affect anybody that wants to farm it. There's, we're just saying that they could actually develop and it could be, it'd be a little more valuable. And it would be developed in the opinion that we, or, you know, in the manner that we wish it to be developed.
Right, because it's future land use.
Future, right.
It doesn't change the zoning unless they initiate a zoning change.
We're not taking anything away from anybody. We're adding, in my opinion, adding to their.
Okay.
The designation of low-density, even going from 1 to 1 to 3, probably doesn't require sewer.
Well, that would be another way of doing it, is instead of changing all that, just to take our agriculture land and up the density on it.
Well, it's kind of a.
What do you?
You probably would just go to the low-density residential. So we kind of look at agricultural slash rural land. It's basically where you're, where you would like to see one-acre lots, probably, you know, well-septic type situations is what that really is. Where, to me, low-density residential means it's a mix. You could still have people on well and septic. At the same time, you could have some area serviced by water and sewer. But I think we, we'll talk with the engineer and see like about capacity and what that area is. And maybe it's not the whole area, or maybe it's part of it for right now. And, but we can talk a little bit more about that the next meeting. We'll bring back some information.
Not that we're looking at the other townships, but like just south of that on Rennie School Road, Blair has high-density at the, at the, and there, at the east end. And then at the west end, where it comes into what, East Silver Lake Road, that future, there's a 10-acre parcel there that's all okayed for high-density.
Yeah, that's been under construction.
Or it hasn't started yet. And then there's that other subdivision, so that's all developed in the.
True.
At least.
Can we make a statement that we'd like to see water and sewer coming down Silver Pines, eventually around Silver Lake?
Right.
You know, there are, there are areas that, that we do recognize that those are gonna be developed. They're close enough into town. And, you know.
That's definitely.
Adds more direction to where we would like to have it go.
Yeah, we've actually, and I'd have to look into where we referenced that, but we did, it might be in some of our other, some of the other chapters that are drafted in the plan, but we talked about that. We were originally gonna kind of identify Silver Lake area as a district for that, but we were just thinking, it probably just, we don't really need to do that. We just need to stipulate that somewhere else in the plan that talks about extending sewer there for the water quality of the lake and so forth. And so there, we did already insert some of that language. But I can bring that, I think it's in some of the other chapters. I think it's in, we put it in the infrastructure chapter, and then we put it in the natural resources chapter. So we got it there from a water, water quality aspect of maintaining water quality in Silver Lake, as well as the infrastructure, knowing that that's an area that we want to serve with sewer for the homes that are in that, in that vicinity.
Sweet, where, do you know where that water comes from? The intersection of Zimmerman, West Silver Lake and East Silver Lake Road? Does it go all the way down to Silver Pines?
Yeah, it's coming from the underground station up there at.
And it comes across on Silver Pines, both.
I don't have it on me, but yeah.
The pump station is on Silver Pines.
Yeah, I know, but run underground water with hydrants and everything, all the way down Silver Pines and back up East Silver Lake, or West, East Silver Lake Road to the intersection, Francisco intersection.
And it keeps running, going down Zimmerman, and it goes all the way up to Brookside now, and it goes up to that big tower that's on Cedar Run now. It connects, basically, there's a big line that connects that, the one on Christensen's property there, that, the underground one to that one over on Cedar Run.
So we already have water there, so we're anticipating there's gonna be growth.
Yeah, we got kind of a loop there that kind of goes along McCray Hill Road, Silver Pines and East Silver Lake Road already.
But I'm kind of agreeing with the Joes here, that maybe we want to increase identity on that if we can.
The only thing I would, one area I might kind of point out is, you know, I think we've talked about preserving the view shed at McCray Hill. So maybe that area, we would maybe adjust a little bit. But that's something that we can, we can, you know, kind of include in that particular area. But yeah, we can take a look at it, and we'll draft something for the next meeting.
Looks like the water goes down there, but sewer does not?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, sewer just goes down 31.
Yeah, or into the Crown on that side, but nothing in between those. Okay.
It's getting, what, transferred or moving up to the Green Hill area, I think, this year, this year or something.
It's going up to Francisco's.
Yeah. Right, and I think it's coming from the Crown, is what they ended up deciding to.
Oh, they're going the other way.
Yeah. As opposed up Silver Lake Road. Yeah.
Kind of at two directions.
It was, it was about, could go either way. And I think the engineer kind of thought that coming from the Crown would be probably the better one.
Sewer is the, since it is further away, that does seem like a further future. But since you already have water down a couple of these corridors, do you just run the same utility in the future down that same corridor? It's a good question.
Yeah, we can come back with some other drafted changes. And again, this is, if stuff comes up when you're, between now and our next study session, you know, we can talk about it at the next study session as well. So this is just a, kind of a discussion we're gonna have over the next couple of meetings.
Well, the other thing that adds to that is that the big piece that's across, behind Sam's, once the water and sewer is in there, it's coming.
Right, if that went in, here's Sam's, that would kind of go this direction.
I know, in conversations with the engineer, township engineer, she expressed concern about the US 31 sewer that goes down there and the age of it and the capacity of it. That's one of the things that she's kind of said that it's, we're gonna have to deal with that at some point in the future here. It's built in the 1970s, it's, it's got a lot, it's, it's a, it's a workhorse for that particular corridor in providing service. So going beyond that, we're gonna have to probably think about how that's gonna work, so.
I find that kind of funny because Blair don't seem to be, they're expanding and a lot of their sewer, and that's coming down that same line. So now we're, we gotta worry, we can't, we're looking at a sewer at its capacity, and we're turning around and letting them use it, or, and we were getting paid for it, but still, it's, they're using up our capacity.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, that's one, I guess, suppose that's one of the things about looking at these systems is, but there's a cost to it. And that's the thing about the water and sewer systems, it's the rate payer's system. And so, but.
They're building more pipe every day, so we can just put it in the ground and we'll be all set.
Yeah.
There won't be any, no, the need won't go down.
No.
No. All right.
Move on to the next.
Yeah, let's go ahead, unless there's any other comments, let's move to the next topic.
The, what I wanted to point out was the master street plan. And this is a new element in the, in the master plan that we're proposing. And it's, it's talking about corridors. And if you look at the, actually, I want to point to the text that we have. If you look on, in your packet on the draft master plan, page 28 is the page that starts the master street plan. And there's an important part that we wanted to touch on. And we get into, looking at this part, the master street plan is something that's, it's defined in the Planning Enabling Act, or it's presented in the Planning Enabling Act. It's not well-defined. But we think is a really good way for the township to identify what's its desires for its transportation system. Even though we rely on MDOT and the Road Commission for those systems, they impact our, our economy, the way land use is developed in our community. So it's important to have at least some way to express our desires to see it, it developed and benefit the overall township in the future. And one of the ways that we want to do. And one of the ways that we want to do is identify some key corridors. And really in this one, there's, uh, only, uh, three of them that we've identified. Hartman Hammond, South Airport and US 31. We feel like those are the really main ones. And on page 28 and getting into page 29 and 30, we talk about the Hartman Hammond, uh, corridor. And we put some, what we call some findings, uh, similar to what findings of fact do. Uh, because we feel there's a lot of conversation about the Hartman Hammond and people talk about the bridge. They talk about the physical construction of the bridge and what that means. And what we think about it from our, our side as the township planners is we're looking at it and thinking this is more than just a bridge. This is a, a, a piece of important infrastructure for the township, but ultimately the region as well. And there hasn't been a lot of mention to its, its relationship to the, the other added aspects of the community. Um, so we identified in there, there's, there was the, in 2019, there was the east-west corridor transportation study. Um, that was really identifying, uh, different options to improve that east-west flow of traffic through not just Garfield. But for Grand Traverse County and the, kind of the urban area. There was the PAL study, which really focused and said that the, uh, preferred result of that study was the Hartman Hammond crossing. As a scenario to improve, uh, that those connections and actually have a, uh, river crossing. So we wanted to recognize that. Those were road commission, um, aspects, but those were really, uh, studies, but those were really important. To understand that those, those studies are out there. There was a lot of agency support for the PAL study, which, um. Identified the Boardman River Crossing at Hartman Hammond. And that was supported by federal highway from MDOT, from EPA, DNR and from local parks. Um, talking about the reduction of traffic volumes on South Airport Road. Um, also one thing we thought, uh, we've heard parts of a conversation, but maybe not in the full way. I think it could really help, um, is a new route for US 31. And if that could be routed down 31, coming down towards Hartman Road, crossing over Hammond. And then at some point, let's say three mile going back and having it relocated there. Uh, that has the potential to alleviate a lot of, uh, traffic and congestion pressures that are actually within the city of Traverse City. And we know right now that the city is kind of, uh, wrestling with that. The improvements that are going to happen to the Grand View Parkway and to Front Street and so forth. And if that could, you know, if some of that truck traffic particularly could be relocated, could actually provide a, a better situation for the city in terms of what they're trying to do. Uh, related to streets in there. Certainly the redundancy by providing a third river crossing. Uh, is really important for emergency incidents, weather events, construction, by having something that's essentially running parallel to South Airport. An interconnected road system is really important, uh, kind of building on that redundancy aspect. When you look at, let's say the city of Traverse City has 15,000 people, they have eight river crossings when you look at all the streets. So that creates a good grid system in there that alleviates, uh, you know, they can actually close down one or more bridges at a time. And still, it still flows, it still functions. If we were to shut down South Airport, we could imagine what the impact would be. So, and when we look at a, a, a growing community of over 20,000 residents, we only have two river crossings. So again, it, it's about creating that interconnected road system. And as we, you know, looking at our growth projections, we're not seeing any more, uh, you know, we're going to see a lot more people, a lot more demand. Uh, particularly a lot more stress on that South Airport crossing. Also, um, we feel that with that crossing at Boardman River, there's also still a need to look at South Airport. And it's, it's crossing, you know, we have the old, uh, culverts that are there. There's not a bridge structure there at South Airport. There's culverts and those eventually have a lifespan to them. So if, by having the Hartman Hammond does alleviate, uh, provide the option to kind of restore that portion of the river. There's been an effort to remove the dams upriver, but that's an area too, that has a potential, South Airport. To be restored and have the original course of the river, maybe restore some of the wetlands in that area. But I don't think there's any way that this community is going to be able to make that happen without having another river crossing first. So that presents the stage for that. Um, certainly Beta is on, on board with the Hartman Hammond with their new location there at, at Hammond and La Frainer. Uh, that would make a great connection for them to be able to get over to the other side of township. Um, and also I think, uh, you know, we've, we've been studying the Hartman Hammond corridor from its land use standpoint. It's primarily, primarily a multifamily residential, industrial, light industrial. Uh, we're not providing for retail commercial in that corridor. It's not, there aren't things like the crossings or the Grand Traverse Mall being established. Which are regional draws for traffic in that area. Uh, that's not the type of land uses. It's more of, uh, trucks that are going to some of the industrial areas or residential with the multifamily. Um, there's impacts, uh, on wetlands, so the, there are actually decreased impacts. The, it's important to understand that the, there would be an impact, um, on the wetlands. It's about, it equates to about one acre with the bridge crossing. That's because the bridge itself is, is ar, you know, arching across the entire valley. Uh, so it's really just the piers that are going in there. It's not, you know, there's, there's no culverts or anything like that. So it's far stretching. It's not what was proposed back in 2001. And then also there's the air quality issue as well. By having a lot of congestion, uh, traffic idling on South Airport Road, particularly in the summer months. Really does reduce our air quality, uh, in the area. And so there's, uh, uh, another reason why there's, uh, needs to have some of this added, uh, interconnectivity. So these are some important things that I don't, I don't think are part of that conversation of how we are trying to build a network through the whole, uh, township. But also a network that is really servicing the entire region. You know, we know that on a daily basis, a lot of the traffic, uh, at these locations, particularly like South Airport Road. Those aren't township residents or just even city residents. Those are residents, uh, throughout the region. Uh, those are visitors through our area. Those are trucks delivering materials to some location. Um, it's going to be taxed, uh, in the foreseeable future. Uh, so there does need to provide some other options. We think by expressing this in the master plan gives it really a broader context in that conversation. As opposed to just focusing on a bridge located going across the river.
John, have, have we, um, had conversation with the road commission to know what they're thinking about? I mean, there has been discussion for 30 years about coming across Hartman Hammond. And another way to get up to Gray Road and get up into Leonard County. Um, and that goes through us, that goes through Garfield. So is the road commission looking at the same kinds of connections that we are or are they?
I think to some degree they are. I think maybe some of these may be something that are, are not on their radar at the moment. But what we thought at this point was to have the conversation here and then meet with their staff and meet with them and, and, and say, this is what we're thinking of including into our master plan. We think there's a opportunity for some great synergy between the township and the road commission to support each other. Uh, particularly when it comes to creating these new corridors in terms of how those are developed. Certainly managing access is really important to the effectiveness of those corridors to work. So if we're having a, for instance, that connection from Hartman over to 31, you know, restricting access to that is going to be, ensure that that flow keeps going in the future. So we think there's some really good opportunity. We just were kind of wanting to vet some of this a little bit with the planning commission. And then we'll sit down with them and, and say, hey, you know, how does this work with your plans and does this make sense? And, uh, certainly we want to kind of unite efforts. The other corridors that we have in there are, uh, South Airport, which we're all familiar with. This really focuses more on the eastern part of the corridor, basically from Logan's Landing over to Garfield Road. Um, because we think that's an area that's kind of a, the traffic flows fairly well around the crossings in that area where it's five lanes and. Um, you know, not as many driveways and so forth, but certainly the area to the east, uh, needs, needs improvement. And then we also talked about 31 and really kind of segmenting that into three parts. We, you know, talking about as you come into the township from the south, kind of that Rennie Plains area, uh, going through that particular area up to. Uh, the top of McCray Hill, McCray Hill trying to provide a gap in the corridor. Uh, having some land conversation effort, conversation efforts, conservation efforts, uh, protecting the view shed and so forth. And then getting down what we've kind of been calling the South View Parkway is that area, uh, from South Airport Road north to the city line. Where it's really kind of a commercial district. It's our primary commercial district within the township. So just putting some guiding principles in that particular portion of that corridor.
When you talk about, go, not really go back a step, but the whole connectivity and the crossings, I mean, it, look how quickly, um, you know, a few weeks ago. Gas line blows up over by, in East Bay Township, they shut down the highway and they route everything up to South Airport Road. It just became gridlock immediately. You know, so it, it's, you know, the, the need is, the need is there. A lot of people don't want to see the need and don't want to agree about the need, but, uh, next year they're going to reconstruct the entire parkway. You know, if you're going on the parkway, you're, you're going to detour down 8th Street all summer long next year, if you don't know that.
Or they'll drop down to Airport.
Yeah, they're not going to do that, exactly. They're not going to go into the town to do that. They're going to take South Airport Road, which is going to make, create gridlock again. So it, it just takes one event or one, you know, situation like that, you know. Nobody was expecting that gas line to blow up, uh, you know, the big bump in the road and then shut it down for a couple of days. And what did it do? So, um, I think, I think we got the right approach to it, you know, and I like, I like the, the comments of the, the whole, the broader area and the benefits of the broader area. You know, I don't think they're disputable quite frankly, but, uh, I like, I like the, the approach, so.
Good. The last part we have are just some specific connections that we put on, um, we talked about, we actually, we have text that supports it. But there's primarily that map that we've developed and then just, and again, some of these are public improvements. And some of these could be private road improvements. Like we always talk about that connection between Lowe's and the Grand Traverse Mall. That's really going to be a, a private road connection is how we see that developing. Uh, there could be some other ones as well. But, uh, we wanted, you know, it's not to say these are all going to happen, but we're saying in a, if, if Garfield were to function better. Uh, by having some connections, these are some areas we'd like to see them happen. Um.
Could also be part of, um, especially in the case of private, uh, either roads or even private drives or cross connections. As we look at, uh, development reviews in certain corridors or certain nodes and neighborhoods. Lowe's, Grand Traverse Mall is all in that kind of Garfield center, uh, area. And we've kind of talked if that were more interconnected, you could get in between some of these lights, uh, without having to go on to 31 or South Airport. If you have, uh, in planning, we call it trip chaining. If you're going to multiple places, uh, you can do that. If, uh, you have that interconnectivity.
So we thought this is a, uh, and again, this is just a rough draft at this point. We kind of, as we're moving along, if you got some other ideas, maybe there's some other connections we haven't thought of, um, that we can at least take a look at and maybe, you know, consider. One thing we are waiting to kind of hear from the road commission is kind of where is that Hartman Road connection going to end up? Um, most recently it looks like it might go, end up just being a straight shot. A lot of it depends on the topography on 31. So it might just kind of hit the bottom of McCray Hill. But, uh, well definitely we'd like to share it with them and see what their thoughts are and, uh, work in tandem with them on, uh, some of these areas.
Any questions about the, we, we've talked about most of these, a couple of near the city I don't remember talking about, the 6th Street connection, a couple of those, but those are pretty minor. Everything else I think we've talked about.
Yeah, and I, and that's, you know, one of the things that helps us too in this, that I, when these conversations and people are concerned about these connections. Know that we're looking at the land use that goes with these corridors. So it's not that these are just street connections, um, or we're ensuring the land use that goes with this is going to be compatible. This is where, if we're working with the road commission and we have development reviews, uh, they have standards in terms of access. Uh, we have some, we have some very stringent requirements in our zoning ordinance. Um, we can work with them. Uh, and if we're on the same page, when a development comes through, we're going to say, hey, look, the road commission in Garfield Township are expecting this type of pattern to be developed here. Um, I think that, that works really good, uh, that we're all on the same page, uh, kind of working towards the same end.
Comments or questions? All right, thanks, John.
Probably the, I just want to mention in terms of future discussions, we will be bringing in some implementation strategies. Um, next month in the study session, uh, including the zoning plan. Do you have a really good zoning plan in the master plan right now, but we'll probably be tweaking that a little bit, looking actually some implementation strategies. The planning commission doesn't have a study session in, uh, November or December. But we thought depending on the load, um, as we're moving through this, if. They, if those business agendas aren't too busy, maybe there could be, and we need to do some additional review. Might be able to sneak some of that in there, uh, on your regular business agenda. But we're getting to a point now where the plan, for the most part, is getting fairly well constructed. I think at some point here, we'd like to probably show you, uh, kind of a real crude, rough draft of where it looks at. When we have the, the plan, a lot of the backup information is all going to be in appendix, in, uh, appendices. So it's, the plan itself is going to be pretty lean and to the point. Uh, a lot of that background information will just be add-on information that will be supplement to that.
This goes back to the study sessions throughout the whole year. So every time we reviewed, uh, one of those topic areas, that's a chapter that's gone into the full thing. So we're excited to get a full draft and then review it, uh, kind of from that perspective. When we do implementation, uh, at the beginning of, of every year, we do the implementation matrix and go back to what our goals were and kind of do a track progress. So as we're constructing the new master plan, we can take the goals and objectives from each of the draft chapters and actually look at it from an implementation perspective. Does this make sense to have as a, a goal that is, uh, you track in this matrix or is this more, more a statement that needs to be made somewhere? Uh, so we can do things like that next month.
John, I, I got a question for you guys.
Mm-hmm.
But just on the dialogue that you have here, uh, you have a description of the designated areas, agricultural, rural. And then, and you start that on page 15.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, you pick it up again on page 26. You've got commercial, industrial and recreation. Do you think they all ought to be sort of in the same area? Those three are land designations also, but they're kind of left out there at the end of another discussion.
Well, the, the mixed use neighborhood and mixed use center are designations, but they're very long because there's a lot of sub context to them. And, but what we can do is reorder those, so maybe those kind of come at the end.
I don't know, if you're going to describe and somebody wants to look it up.
Yeah, because they're, all of those are future land use designations. It's just that the mixed use neighborhood, mixed use center have all those sub areas. So, well, we can.
Can organize it.
Yeah.
A little differently, yeah. Just so those don't get lost at the end.
That's fine.
But we are good on a timeline, so it's still, our goal is to get you the full draft plan by January. And then have a joint meeting with the plant, uh, town board in February to review that, so.
And also the township newsletter goes out in December. And also, the township newsletter goes out in December, so if we have a full draft, even if it's in draft form or knowing that it's coming, we can use that to notify the public as well that, look for the final draft or at least a complete draft. Publicize the part of the website as well, so.
Online.
Online, yep.
Yeah, not in the newsletter.
Yeah, don't, don't give them the whole, that's, we want to keep all our trees. But yeah, no, we can use that website that we posted at the beginning to post the full draft after we reviewed it with Plan Commission and whenever that's ready.
And we'll have something available here if somebody just wants to come in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I do that too, yeah.
All right, no, that looked really good, really good. Any other questions, questions? And I see there's no action required just for discussion.
Yep, just discussion.
For tonight, so. Well, if there's no opposition, we'll move on to new business. I don't see anything listed, any other new business? Anybody on the board have anything they'd like to bring up from a new business standpoint? Thanks for the follow-up on the stuff we brought up last meeting, appreciate that. Next chance for our public to get up and comment, so we'll open up our second final public comment of the evening. Our public is shaking their head and saying they're not interested in commenting, so we'll close public comment. And any other business from the town, the staff or the board? All right, looks like our next agenda items for October 11th, we'll have the findings of fact on the Durgar 3 rezoning, the portable steroids solutions, special use permit finding of fact. Marengo 31, special use permit extension request, remind me what Marengo 31 is.
They were the ones behind Baymont Inn over on 31. Yeah, they were doing about 60 units, so they were coming up at the end of two years here in December. Yeah, they're putting in an extension request.
How long is that, Steve, the extension is another year?
It would be for another year.
We've always gave them, pretty much anybody that asks for one, right?
Yeah, and I think with the pandemic affecting companies nationally with both supply chain and staffing, I think they've, everyone that got approved between 2020 and 2022 has experienced some kind of delay. So it's still reverberating, yeah.
I don't think we've ever denied anybody.
No, no, I just, I just was drawing a blank on Marengo. Didn't go back through my notes and former agendas, I just, the name just didn't jump out at me. I'm very familiar with the, or now I remember the project, so. And then a 3066 North Garfield, Commercial District Housing Special Use Permit, so the information on it, whereabouts is that?
That's right on the corner of Garfield and Dual Road, right down from South Airport, next to the car wash.
Old landscaping company.
The old landscaping company used to be there, there's like a house, old house on that property. It's about, about 1.3 acres, looking at maybe putting a 20-unit apartment building there.
All right. Okay, looks like a pretty, pretty good agenda, those shouldn't be too bad, two findings of fact and then a couple of requests, so. All right, that brings us to item 11.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Fine, nobody opposed to that, we adjourn.